Meeting of the Select Board. I'll ask for a roll call. Frank West here.
William Esseli here.
Greg Bendel here.
Kevin Kyra here.
Gavri D'Ami here. And I will ask everyone to rise for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance is as follows. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our meeting, I'd like to take a moment for Kathleen Scanlon, who passed away recently. She was a longtime employee of the town. She was the town clerk from 1992 to 2006. I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll go to our transmission of Treasury warrants. Treasury warrant numbers 2411, 2411W, 2411T, 2411S, 2412, 2412W, and 2412T. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? We have no minutes to approve tonight. We'll go into the appointments. The first appointment will be with Michael McCoy, Michael's Place, requesting to obtain a common vehicle license for property located at 110 Lowell Street. Good evening, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Where do I start? If someone said to me many years ago, "Do you think you'd be before the Board of Selectmen for another common visual license?", I would say, "No way that would ever happen." Guess what? I'm here. So I just want to just talk about a few minutes if I could. I opened up Michael's Place Restaurant in 1984, and I had a 31-year track record of success until 2015. I sold the business, and I took paper back like an idiot. I took paper back as the bank to enter a 10-year lease with my tenant. And I can talk about that in a second. So the bottom line is, what I plan on doing is reopening Michael's Place again at the home. It's going to be me at the forefront. I'm going to create a lot of the old Michael's Place favorites will be coming back. I will also create new items out of the box to meet the new demographic demands. I will also have a combination of old, original Michael's Place favorites along with new menu items. And I probably won't be opening up probably for about six months, several months, because, first of all, COVID has touched all our lives, and I'll talk about that in a second if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman and members. There were shipping issues, there were equipment shortages that were on back order. So everything I need to buy is just going to take some time. And so that's one of the issues that I have to deal with. And I wanted to talk about a few things if I could, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I know COVID has changed this whole world, and I just want to give a little insight what has happened to me relative to COVID. As members of the Select Board and members of the Board of Selectmen, you received my 10-year lease, my note, my promissory note, when I had to surrender my liquor license with the new tenant. I was really never expecting to be here ever again. I had planned on selling the biz. I took paper back, and at the end of 2025, he would buy the property. That never happened. And just to let you know how COVID has devastated a lot of people in this world, this town, myself, financially, that was my only source of income, having Michael's Place at that restaurant. I didn't have three retail stores where if one person went under, I could count on the other two. And basically, what COVID did was, it gave, and I have to say it, it gave scumbag people out there an opportunity legally not to pay their obligations. They, and Charlie Baker's moratorium happened in March 10th of 2020, an executive order, they did stay in business for four months. They stopped paying the rent, the note, the property tax, the insurance. And where did you think all that money came from? Just want to give you an example, and I'm sure there's hundreds of people out there like me. All right? That money came out of savings. I had to pay the property tax. I know on the agenda this evening, you're the town assessor wanting to talk about some issues. And I even called her and said, "Is there any relief for somebody like myself? Because I have no income coming in, I'm directly hit by COVID." And no, I had to pay the property tax, and I paid it. I paid all my bills. I paid the insurance, I paid for everything, out of pocket since March 10th, 2020, and I'm still paying the property tax, the insurance, and everything today. So I even went as far as to share this story with you folks to hire a professional real estate restaurant broker for nine months. He did everything in his power. He was in charge, he's a player. He tried to get Joe Fish to a lease, couldn't be successful in that. He said, "Michael, not too many people open restaurants these days." I mean, restaurants, I was always part of my, you know, well-being, I enjoy doing it. And if you take a look, there are a lot of vacancies out there. And Michael's Place has been vacant since about June or July of 2020. They did stay in the business for four months. So I decided to go with him to see what he could do, and no luck at all getting a tenant. So I just made the executive decision, I took that sign. My son Chris and I, we just ripped that sign apart, we threw it in the building, and I made the decision that I'm going to reopen it. At least I can trust myself, I know that I can do a good job at it, and I'm going to employ 15 to 20 people. And like I said, when I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. So that's pretty much where I'm at. But I just wanted to touch base with you folks. And once again, I am going to try for that COVID money under the American Rescue Plan Act. I'm going to do my best, because that did affect my family financially. You know, it did. It affected a lot of people, gave excuse COVID. There was a lot of people, a lot of people I know, and I'm friends with some, a lot of seniors and some people, they died in this COVID. It was something serious, it was, absolutely. But then people use that legal excuse to get out of their obligations, and they did. They did. And it was just devastating for me and my family. So on an up note, I'm really looking forward of reopening Michael's Place again. I did it for 31 years, I had a track record. There was, I had a liquor license from 1996 until I sold it. There was a standard license up until, I think, 2020. So what I need to do is go inside, and I have to really do some cosmetic. I had to do some cosmetic work to make it look better than it did when I left it. You know, it's not as nice as I did when I left it. So I have to make some cosmetic changes, do some work inside. And once again, there is major issues when it comes to getting equipment these days. It's just really tough, it's just COVID is still affecting everybody. And I'm happy to answer any question on your mind. And like I said, did I ever think I'd be before this board looking for a common visual license? No way that I ever think this was going to happen to me, but it did. And I'm happy to come back, I'm not a young guy anymore, but I will do my best, and I know I'll do it. I know I'll hit it out of park, there's no doubt in my mind, I'll do a great job, you know? And another obstacle is, I'm going to do it, a lot of folks do it, and I understand how it works. I'm coming down well ahead of time, showing good faith that this is what I'm going to do because of what I talked about, that COVID relief money. And number two, I'm going to get the restaurant all up, get it all running, get it to look beautiful inside again like it was when I left it. And then, once I get all the equipment in, I know I have to get signed off by the, you know, the Board of Health and the Building Inspector, then I'll do a job for you. I'll advertise where I will be there several hours a day for how long does it take to hire people? I'm starting from square one, I just can't believe this happened. But I'm looking forward to it, I'm all excited about it. And I've always been a great business partner with the community, myself, Chucky, Matty Deepa Squaw. We donated thousands of dollars in the day, and we have good restaurants today. Tremenzos and AJ's doing it today. And I'm not going to change that attitude. I'm going to really be a good business partner with the community. I'm going to do things, I do things for senior citizens all the time. And so that's what I'm going to do, folks, and...
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, thanks.
Question. What do you think your hours are going to be?
I'm going to, whatever, I'm going to, I hope I'm not going to be there late at night because I don't want to do that, but I'm going to take a look at everything relative to the hours. I plan on opening for lunch and maybe supper time, but then again, I'm looking at other aspects of maybe opening in the morning time as opposed to that, you know? So I'm definitely going to be doing two servings in the daytime. It's just that whatever the demographics allow, I got to look at it, it's a different world today. We have to...
Thank you. Any questions from anyone?
No, just a comment, Mr. Chair, that I'm looking forward to the reopening of Michael's Place.
I appreciate that, and I really, as much as here, you know, like, I'm going on, by the time I reopen, it's going to be like nine years since I sold the biz. And it just blows my mind that I'm actually coming back. But now that that's happened, I'm really excited by it, I know we're going to do a good job, my family's going to be helping me, and, you know, we hired a lot of high school kids, college students. I gave up full-time jobs, and I had a great work staff. And all my tenant had to do was show up and do nothing, that's it.
Mr. Chair, I just, too, just want to say, you know, welcome back, and we're looking forward to it. And, you know, congratulations, I know it's a lot of hard work, but glad to see it happening despite, you know, what brought you to this point, but, you know, you're... I appreciate it, yeah. No, yeah. Good luck.
So the, just for the board's information, the Building Inspector recommends approval. The Health Director recommends approval contingent upon meeting all of the Board of Health requirements, which include the inspections and obtaining a food establishment permit.
Any other questions?
Good luck.
I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a vote. Do I have a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept with the Board of Health restrictions, I guess is...
Conditions, everything is contingent upon obtaining the Board of Health approvals.
I'll second. I'll second.
Second, a little second. All those in favor? Opposed?
All right, thank you, everybody.
Welcome back, Mr. McCoy.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you. Well, I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave now, so hey, I'll let everybody know what's happening. I really appreciate it, thanks a lot. Hey, thank you very much. These are all the secret recipes. Even big Joe's meat pie. All right, folks, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Next on the agenda will be the senior center construction, the bid pricings. Could I get everyone up? Good evening, gentlemen. I personally am hoping that this is the last time we see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Select Board members, Town Manager Hull. With me tonight is our OPM, Dan Pallotta from P3, Professional Planning Services. We have a presentation for you. As you know, we're getting ready for the construction phase of our senior center. So we have gone out for file sub bids and GC bids. On September 15th was the deadline for our general contractors to file their bids for this project, and that's what we're going to present tonight. You should have a copy of the presentation in front of you. We received five bids for this project from a low of 16,000, 16,857,000 to a high of 20,122,478 dollars. These bids are higher than we anticipated. This is the filed sub bidders as they come in. The filed sub bid is the first row, you can see the total on the bottom. We utilized the low bid, which is over here on the second list. There's the difference of 225,000 or an increase of 3.96%.
Mr. Chair, just to jump in for a quick second, it may be helpful to note that the filed sub bids, as you can see, are various trades in the industry, but those bids were submitted prior to the general contractors. So once the filed sub bids are submitted, that information is provided to all the general contractors that have been qualified, and they can use those sub trades in preparing their own bids.
Correct. I will jump back to the previous slide. Also, with these bids, we had alternates included in these packages. And what these alternates were, were the alter number one was to remove the generator from the cost of the job. We had an alternate number two, which was to replace the roofing with just strictly asphalt shingles. We had an alternate number three, which was to remove the pergola. And this was kind of to help us, if the bids came in at a certain range, we could use these alternates as trying to get more control of the project. Dan, I don't know if you want to touch base on any of that?
Only that we have to take the alternates in order, you can't take number three or number two, you have to start with number one, or take number, you know, base bid, or base bid plus one, or base bid plus one, two, or base bid plus one, two, three. The top three bidders are really close together, which is a good indication that the documents are good and that the clarity of the bid documents was such that, you know, three really qualified contractors came up with very similar numbers for a project of this size.
All right, so this is the summary of what we've gone through to this point. So our filed sub bidders were due on August 30th, 2023. The actual filed sub bidders' actual increase was 3.9% over the construction documents' cost estimates. We had an anticipation of a high general contractor's bid, and a low bid on there, which you saw of 16 million, came in at 12.25% higher than the appropriation estimate. Dan, I'll let you go through this section.
So one of the questions that we immediately asked ourselves is, you know, why are we, why are we high? What did we do wrong? Did we do anything wrong? And this is, this is an example of what we carried through the project. And if you look at the red boxes, escalation that we carried at the appropriation was 7% for the year. The escalation during design development had dropped to 1% at the time. Gas prices were coming down, the supply chain was getting a little better, and things looked a little bit better, and both estimators had indicated that they were comfortable reducing the inflation factor. Same with when the construction documents came out. So in reality, construction is, year-to-date, is up about 20%, and we carried 7%, and our bids reflect an increase of 12.3, which is the delta between 20 and 7. The design cost estimate should have been at 13.5%, and even the construction documents, which were estimate, which was four months ago, should have been at 7%. Those represent the real numbers that have changed with regard to this project. The filed sub bids, when the filed sub bids came in 4% higher, we didn't panic. We couldn't change the design because almost everything in a senior center affects filed sub bidding, and you can't change anything with filed sub bidding after the bids are received. So we took, you know, we took a look at it, and we thought, you know, at 4% we'd be able to struggle our way through it. If the generals had come in at 4%, and they didn't, they came in at the 12.96.
So this is, seems to be very common across, across the industry. The next slide here, which Dan put together, kind of shows what the Mass School Building Authority is doing. They've recognized this, and they actually, their accelerated repair program that they had going, they've halted because they cannot keep up with the cost escalation. Everything that they've been up to bid has come back extremely high. They've halted that, and that is reflected also in this slide.
So on this slide, if you look at the horizontal arrow at the bottom, that's basically the trend that the MSBA projects have done since the inception of the MSBA in 2010, 2009. We did our appropriation right about where the arrow ends, and we did not carry that escalation forward, we actually increased it. So that's about a 4% climb, we increased it to a 7% climb because it was clear something was going on. But in reality, you can see that it really, it's a parabolic curve, and it's climbing at a rate that's, that's, that's just was unforeseen by all the professionals, including the estimators, the OPM, and the designer.
Each one of these little squares is a project with the Mass School Building Authority.
So the shortfall that we have is 1.8 million. We cannot award the construction unless we have an additional 1.8 million. You know, Mass General law requires that the funds be available and that the Finance Director certifies that the funds are available when you start a project, and we don't have enough funds to start the project. We're 1.8 million short. The 1.8 million is a direct reflection on the construction number. And that's what we have, pretty much, why we're here tonight, to seek an avenue to find 1.8 million. You know, one of the questions that was asked at the Building Committee meeting was, you know, how much have we spent, how much, you know, how much is the town into the project? And we figure that it's about 1.106 million today that you have either contracted out that could stop or have spent to date on the design of the project.
And you can see where the escalation is, it's right in the construction cost. So we did hold our meeting on September 20th with the Building Committee. We reviewed this, we went through a lot of the questions that you may have also tonight. So they did have a recommendation, but of course, it's upon the approval of additional funding. At this time, I'd like to open up to any questions.
I have a question to start out with. If we were to postpone this project for any length of time, the contract would become, the bid would become null and void? Or, we have 30 days that we can approve this contract, correct?
You have 30 business days from the date of contract on the 15th to award the contract.
And anything over that?
Anything over that would have to be under mutual agreement with the general contractor, but the general contractor would need to seek mutual agreement with every one of those filed sub bidders.
Thank you, I just wanted to get that clear right off the top. Questions? I know you're, we're seeking, or you're seeking funds of 1.8 million through the ARPA program? So one of the things that we did discuss, and I asked the Assistant Town Manager at the time, we were looking at two ways. One of them was to hold a special town meeting to see if we can get the appropriation for the 1.8 million. So we had to look at the timelines, see what we had there. Again, we're looking at a 30-day window. So you have to give a notice to the public, we have to go through the Finance Committee, we have to do the public hearing. And that's an appropriation that we would have to go to the town meeting to get. Or we could look at the funds, which we have enough to review with our town accountant, Brian Perry. The funds are there. This is the type of project that it can be applied to. So this is the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act, that the 1.8 million could be transferred to this account. It would not require a town meeting, I believe it's through the Select Board that could go through. That appropriation would keep this project on track, and we'd be able to do the award and move forward with the lowest responsible bidder.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have a few questions if I could.
Please.
One of the questions I have, if you can answer this, Dan, is the pickleball courts that are in the back right now, according to the building is scheduled for $800,000. And can those pickleball courts be delayed? Not eliminated, but delayed, so you're saving the 800,000?
We, yeah, it's a good question. If it was as simple as just removing the pickleball courts, we could, we could attempt to do that between the filed sub bids and the general bids, but there's lighting, there's emergency circuits for the call boxes, there's a little bit more to it than just the pickleball court itself. To do that as a condition of awarding the project would be a violation of Chapter 149, because although we believe that the pickleball courts are worth 800,000 all in, the second bidder, who's a couple hundred thousand down, could claim, "Oh, no, I was going to build the pickleball courts for 400,000, and I would have been low bidder if I had the opportunity." So it's not quite that simple, we can't do that. When we do have a contractor on board, we can look at areas to save money. We try not to do that because we usually get, you know, less than 50 cents on the dollar for reductions, and it will cost the town a lot more to put it in. If the pickleball courts were installed post-construction, you're going to be driving over the brand-new parking lot to install them. So it gets a little bit, a little bit dicey.
No, I just asked to see if there was...
It's a good question.
And can you explain to me, the novice, maybe some of the people out there, the difference between how the Town Hall and School Administration building was bid out and the CM, they call, you know the terminology, bid at risk compared to build, bid built?
Design bid built.
Design bid built. And wondering why, because the Town Hall and School Admin, I think, is around 31 million, and that's firm, whereas this went a different route and now became, you know...
So, um... I'd be happy to explain it all. The Town Hall School Administration is CM at risk. And CM at risk, you hire the construction manager right after schematic design, like we did. And we work with the CM to constantly review the budget as we're going along. Design bid build, we get the estimates from a third-party estimator, and in our case, two estimators, and we bid it to the market rate. The Town Hall School Admin, although is tracking right now, almost to target, we're pretty close, you remember from the last meeting. The final contract amount will be signed post-file sub bids. So, you know, we have to, we have to make sure that those file sub bid trades come in where they're supposed to come in. So although the general contractor controls about 60% right now of that budget, 40% of it is still related to the market. So there is a slight difference between the two. When we went to do the senior center, the senior center was a smaller project, and CM at risk is generally larger projects. It doesn't work quite as well with smaller projects because the cost of the CM being on board beforehand and the negotiation that you do with some of the factors with the CM upfront, doesn't, the cost value doesn't really work out when the projects are less than 20 million. And this was originally scheduled to be 15 million and 17,000. All right?
And another question, I see that Mr. McGoldy's in the back, the Superintendent of the DPW, and in the packet, it explained about the ARPA funds, and I was wondering if you could explain that to the citizens, how that's all coming about for us as well?
Sure, on behalf of too, Mr. Kyra, Jamie McGoldy, Public Works Director. Good evening to the board. So two years ago, when the ARPA funds came about, we were looking for creative ways to allocate that money. We put $5.5 million toward the Woburn Street water main project, which is the replacement of a two-mile stretch of 10-inch cast iron water main that's approximately 90 years old. That project was part of our latest water management plan update to have redone. It wasn't a top priority at the time, but we're kind of working our way down the priority list now. And that was two years ago when we allocated funding. We've since committed about $300,000 to that project, and, through design, and it's becoming apparent that there's a lot of ledge on Woburn Street. So construction projections are actually going up well beyond $5.5 million for this project. So, long story short, if we were to allocate 1.8 million from this project, the Woburn Street water main project would just shrink from a two-mile stretch down to whatever we could afford with the remaining ARPA money. And then we would phase subsequent phases over subsequent years in order to complete that project.
And how do you see paying that subsequent phase through the water department fund? Through the water department or through...
So estimates are bringing that project anywhere between 7 million and maybe upwards of $10 million. of $10 million to complete the entire two-mile stretch. It is a massive project, so depending on when, you know, how bids come in when we put it out, um, likely it would be a borrow through, you know, water funds over subsequent years. It would be millions of dollars. You're welcome.
And my, my last question, uh, would be, uh, to you, to the two of you, I don't have anything to get worried about, is, uh, is 1.8 million enough, um, in looking at this? Because when I subtract the, the 15 from, from the 16, I come with, uh, 1,8, 1, 1,839,542 to be exact, so I don't know.
You, you, you're.
Not enough.
Funny, we've had this.
We've had this discussion. George, George and I talk hourly, so, um, there are a couple of line items in the original, uh, estimate, uh, that, uh, we had anticipated being higher that came in lower, um, specifically GeoTech and Survey. So those funds, uh, I pushed over to, to make that difference up. We need 1.8 million. Uh, ex, you know, we, 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 we're actually short 1,814,414, uh, to, if you want to get to the penny, but, uh, the 14,114 is, w- we'll find that in the contingency.
That's a contingency and that's what that construction contingency is for.
That's, so.
Right.
But your math's good.
But, I mean, to, uh, back to the point of, Mr. McGoldy just brought, his construction project originally estimated at 5.5 million. Um, sure, if he looked at it again, he's going to be up around 7.5 and not throwing any numbers out, but just escalation in cost.
Uh, you know, I, I would like to say, if I may, this is a state problem we have right now and it's, it, it has affected schools so badly that the MSBA got an, an additional 100 million from the legislature to backfill, um, a, a little more than a dozen schools that their bids came in tens of millions over. Um, so, uh, this is not, this is unprecedented. Uh, you, you, you've been here a long time. You know that the MSBA never gives more money once you sign that grant and they've gone back and upped a grant on, on a dozen communities and, because they have to. And we're just in a really, we're in a really bad situation right now and we're, you know, we're doing the best we can with the data that we're given. You know, with the days that we did those estimates, that was the best data we had at the time.
Thank you. Our, oh. I have one question. By taking this, these funds away or transferring them to another project, that's not going to cause a delay in any of your projects, correct?
Uh, no, it, it shouldn't. In fact, it may do the opposite. If we were to bite off the entire two-mile stretch of water main, we would be putting major stress on Woburn Street from Lowell Street all the way to High Street, in addition to the intersection project at Lowell Street and Woburn Street, in addition to all the bridge work that's going on, in addition to Main Street being reconstructed. There's a lot going on in town. So will it slow the project down? I think we'll have more competition if we bite ups, bite off smaller sections of water main and kind of do it, you know, over several years. And certainly that may also have less of an impact on the motoring public.
Thank you. Yeah, I just don't want to see us rob Peter to pay Paul and then Peter comes out with his handout and we don't have the money for them and we cause an issue with you, but, uh, I thank you very much.
The only thing I will say is when you, it's like any other project, when you do a project in sections, you're then paying extra for mobilization. So when you look at it long-term, it's not as financially efficient, but that's the sacrifice.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question now. The 19.753 million, that's a not-to-exceed price now, so it's not like somebody's going to be coming back to the well and say, oops, you know, prices rose again, so we have to...
It's an, it's another good question. Uh, when we award the project, uh, the first thing that we do is we issue a notice of award, uh, with the request that they provide a performance bond and a payment bond as well as a certificate of insurance and then we hand them a contract. And, um, the performance bond locks in the price at, at the bid price and they have to build what's on those drawings for the, for that locked-in price. So they can't come back and say, oh, well, things went up and we need more money. Uh, it doesn't work that way. That's why we, that's why we request, statutorily are required to request that performance bond.
So the bonds are part of the 19.7?
Correct.
So if they perform 100%, we give a thumbs up on the project when it's completed? They would get that money back, so?
Well, they'll pay, they'll pay a premium for the bond as insurance, but we're the recipient of the bond if they don't complete the project. The bonding company will be forced to do so at the original price.
Right, so I guess my question is, is that, so that would come down a little bit? So if they got a, if, if we can, if they had, I think one of them was a $114,000 bond, if they completed the project on time, on schedule, et cetera, would that price be reduced by 100, say 114,000?
No.
No?
No. So the, 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 the total project budget, uh, will, uh, not be exceeded, but the possibility for savings exists with regard to contingency. So, uh, on new construction, it's pretty rare to have contingency greater than 2%. Um, unless the owner drives the changes, you know, the owner comes in and, and wants to add or deduct or whatever. Um, w- we're carrying, we're carrying just under 5% contingency, so, you know, the possibility of, of, of not using all of that ARPA money exists or, or the, or the, uh, bond allocation, depending on how internally you guys want to code it.
Okay. All right, I.
Questions?
I just want to make a comment that I know that this has been a long time coming for the seniors, so it's not something that I think that we should stop. I think we're, you know, unfortunately, the, you know, the price is what it is, but I think we've gone too far to, to want to stop it and you see just by the, the amount of seniors that are here on a rainy Monday that it's not something that they want to see stopped, so I think we should support it.
Chairman, go ahead.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I have no objection here. I, I look forward to voting, uh, in favor of this later tonight. I do have a question about the ARPA funding and maybe it's, uh, better suited for Mr. Hall, is that how we decided, uh, to pull that from that particular portion of the ARPA, uh, allocations? Was other portions of the ARPA funding considered? Could you just kind of talk me through how we arrived at the Water Main Project?
Um, the total sum that the town received for ARPA was just over 7 million. It was like 7 million, $7,000 and change. Uh, the lion's share of the money was slated to go for this public works project. Um, so, um, you know, we have funding, as you recall, that went towards, uh, work associated with the, uh, infrastructure in North Wilmington, uh, over by Jefferson, uh, Road. A lot of that money has been committed or spent to this point. Um, so this was really the place within the ARPA budget, so to speak, that we could draw funds from, uh, and it made the most sense, uh, to tap into this category for the reasons that Jamie McGoldy cited.
And can I add? I believe, and correct me, Mr. Hall, if I'm wrong, that we need to expend these funds by a date certain, too.
May 26. Right, they have to be obligated by, uh, date certain and, and expended by date certain.
Right, and if we do not, they get returned back, correct?
Right, so it's clear, uh, proceeding on the construction schedule that we have laid out here, that these funds will be spent within the timeline and these, um, the, the, um, the rules have changed to some measure as, uh, ARPA funds, as the ARPA funds have remained in existence and, uh, projects, uh, or communities that have received less than $10 million in ARPA funding, um, uh, the categories within which we can expend the money has broadened. Uh, it's considered revenue.
Replacement.
Replacement, uh, funding. So as a result of that, we're able to spend, uh, if the board so chooses, uh, these funds for this purpose.
Thank, and I just, thank you. I just wanted to conclude by saying, um, you know, I think this is actually the second time that this board has reallocated money, uh, from the ARPA funds. I think the first time we reallocated some money that was set aside for more COVID testing and we real, reallocated that unanimously. I don't see why we wouldn't do the same here. Thank you.
And I'll just add that, um, as I said the other night, it, it, at the meeting, it's, um, anything that we cut is insignificant in savings and, uh, going to town meeting just doesn't make sense because it'll take too long of a process and we'll never make the 30-business-day response. So, um, I, I agree that this is the, the right thing to do and, and I appreciate Mr. McGoldy agreeing, um, to let those funds, you know, be repurposed should this board, um, agree. So I think this is the, the way to move and I look forward to supporting this as well.
Thank you.
Chair, just a, a follow-up to, uh, Mr. McGoldy. I did, just to use your crystal ball, um, any idea when you'd think, um, the Water Main Project would be completed and just to rest assure the residents in that area that there is no issue with the water itself, even though you're replacing the pipe, if you could?
Yeah, of course, there is no issue with the water. It's strictly an infrastructure replacement program. Um, again, it's a 10-inch cast iron pipe. We're trying to replace our cast with ductile iron. Um, it's an upgrade to a bigger size pipe to a, a 12-inch. Primarily, the project is for infrastructure replacement due to age. There is an ancillary benefit there that we may get a little bit more flow. Um, that'll help water get from the MWRA connection to the rest of the town. Uh, however, there, there is no problem with the water. And as far as when it, when it would be done, um, again, if we were to put this project in phases out to bid this November, which is the plan, we're looking at hopefully getting the project done in three phases. So instead of a 10,000 linear foot project, we would probably do it in snippets of maybe 3,500 linear feet. So if we can do that in three years, we would have it done in, in three years. The good news is the ARPA funds have to be spent by the end of calendar year 2026, so our Phase 1, which would be planning to go out next spring or summer for construction, would be done by then anyway. So the subsequent phases would just be non-ARPA funded.
Uh, I've been in Wilmington for about 31 years now and every year I hear the same thing. We need a senior center. While it's here, I don't feel that there's any issue with, uh, funding the extra funds that you need. Uh, let's get this thing built and, uh, as a town, let's enjoy it. So do I hear a motion to?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, um, would like to take.
Excuse me, I want to go to.
Board to consider, yeah.
Article 6. A redirecting 1.8 million of the Arbor Reserve Plan Act, ARPA funding from Woburn Street Water Main Project to the Senior Center Building Project. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Let's get this thing built.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, our 7:30 appointment with our principal assessor regarding outside legal services for Redding Municipal Light Department versus the Town of Wilmington.
Just want to see if anybody wanted to say anything. I don't think they're here for the car wash about that last agenda item, just as a courtesy to them. About number six, seeing if anybody wanted to make a comment, keep it loud.
Oh, uh, on the, uh, senior center. Does anybody want to make a comment?
I would.
In the public? I apologize, shame on me?
I'm just so pleased.
Sorry, Karen, just be.
I'm not sorry.
Come on up.
People on TV.
Thank you. I didn't think they were here for the car wash.
I just want to say thank you to everybody here, the people that came up, people that are here, not for anything. We really have waited a long time and it is our time. We, we appreciate your helping us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Allen, a member of the Permanent Building Committee. I want to thank each and every one of you members, um, for voting tonight to transfer this money. We have worked long and hard and we've really, um, we've not created a palace here, but I think the building that we have is really going to serve the seniors and myself as a senior for a very, very long time. And I'm so proud to see, um, this project go forward and I want to thank each and every one of you for your vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Who else? Now, and I apologize.
Mr. Chair, just to, uh, introduce the subject a bit, so, um, the Redding Municipal Light Company, Department, rather, um, has a, um, there's been a, um, question raised with property on Ballard Vale Street that they recently acquired in terms of their, their requirement to pay taxes on the property. Uh, and as, as you know, one of the options that, uh, property owners have is to pursue a, an appeal to the appellate tax board. It hasn't gone there yet, but, uh, there are discussions, uh, that are going to be taking place. And you may recall from a prior incident we had a few years ago, uh, it was a different set of circumstances, but, um, Redding Municipal Light was, uh, taking, uh, some action that required, uh, the, a town employee to serve as a witness, uh, in this particular claim and because RMLD is represented by KP Law, as are we, uh, the board at the time authorized special counsel. So, um, Karen can speak more specifically about it, but essentially it's a similar situation. Uh, the town would need to have legal representation and KP, uh, still represents RMLD.
Thank you.
Okay.
Pleasure, Karen.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you, and, uh, town manager, Hall, thank you very much. Um, so I had discussions with the town manager regarding, um, the Redding Municipal Light acquisition of a 3.4-acre piece of land on Ballard Vale Street, uh, last October for $4 million. And the Board of Assessors is under the, um, belief and position that this triggers a pilot payment between the Redding Municipal Light and the Town of Wilmington under Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5F, actually. And under that section of the law, it does dictate the process for calculating a pilot payment.
Just, just to jump in a quick second. A pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I didn't. Um, and, uh, so the first year that this would go into place would be this January 1st, um, after the tax rate set and at the same timing as the mailing of the regular tax bills. So we wanted to, um, well, Jeff and I had discussed that having the town council represent us and Redding Municipal Light was probably not in the best interest of the Town of Wilmington, but that we should have outside counsel to, uh, represent us and asked if I knew of any, um, attorneys at the appellate tax board that did such, um, would, would take the case. So there is a woman, as I noted in the, um, memo, that Ellen, attorney Ellen Hutchison, she has a good track record at the appellate tax board. She's actually not available until mid of October right now because she is representing an $800 million, um, electric generating plant at the moment. So she does have, um, experience in this area. Her rate is $200 an hour, which is below the KP, um, hourly rate and, um, she is, you know, definitely well-respected and sent an email to me saying that she would be happy to work with the, with the town on this matter. Um, the agreement is completely separate from the Redding Municipal Light agreement that you have, which is the 2% based on kilowatt-hours and usage. This is really just about the land acquisition, so that's what we're, um, seeking, uh, her services.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. West?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Raskis, the, um, so they bought a 3-point acre piece of land on Ballard Vale Street, Redding Light did?
Yes.
And they're going to do what with the land?
Um, my understanding is, I mean, that's a better question for planning, but they are before them, I believe, um, with... are before them, I believe, with another substation. Is that the right verbiage? Because of the power demands on Ballardvale Street and with all the development that's been going on at that end of town.
Okay. And do they not pay taxes because of their municipal entity? Is that?
Right. So, typically, they'd be tax-exempt when you purchase the land. However, there is a provision in the law that allows for the taxation under a pilot agreement with a particular formula for when a community buys land in another community. Or, like, it's common when you see a watershed district, so like Lynn Water and Sewer owns land in Saugus, so they owe them a pilot payment every year, and it's calculated annually.
So, this land is now owned by the Town of Redding?
Redding Municipal Light's the one that was on the deed for that.
Okay. And the pilot, what are we, at the end of the day, what are we all looking for?
So, a pilot agreement is a payment in lieu of tax. So, instead of us taking a $4 million sale price as if it was a regular taxpayer, you know, and times the commercial tax rate would be close to $100,000 in taxes. So, they're treated a little bit differently, and there's a formula that's in place to calculate what that tax payment would be. Yep. So, and they're just disagreeing that that's the case. So, it's kind of, we'd just like to sit down and be represented with counsel to get to a mutual agreement as to how we're going to move forward with that.
So, at the end of the day, it sounds like, like you said, we, if a commercial entity in that location would probably be paying, like you said, about $100,000 a year in property taxes, and we're looking for, like, some sort of payment in lieu of coming up with a generic tax assessment bill?
Correct. Under the provisions of that section of the law that specifically address what should be being paid, we don't feel that it was part of the old agreement, which because the 2% payment that the town gets is really from the electric generation, how much electricity they generate in kilowatt-hours, and a totally different calculation. This is nothing to do with that. If that gets renegotiated once they have another substation there, and there's more wattage produced, but this is really about the land.
Thank you.
Number 7 on the order?
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Ms. Rassus, so what would be the next steps here? We're going to say okay to this, and what happens? Go to mediations, go to?
So, it starts the conversation again between Redding Municipal Light, KP Law, and us with Ellen, to have the discussions about agreeing to disagree about the calculation, and showing examples, and getting deeper into the law as to how we're going to move forward so that we can get a tax payment by January 1st, or in the month of January. That's the timing that the law allows for as well. So, it's really to start the conversation. We did have an appeal with them, and if we have to have representation at the appellate tax board, she would step into that role as well.
No, I think that pretty well sums it up. So, if the board authorizes this, and we have a, an agreement that the board would be asked to sign at presumably your October 10th meeting between the town and Ellen Hutchinson.
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 Yes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
This is Board to Consider 7, right?
Number 7, yeah.
Yes, Board, I, Board to Consider 7. It's approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Communications, we have a memo to the board from myself and Glenn Brand, the Superintendent of Schools, with a recommendation on relocation of Voting Precincts 3 and 4. You'll recall Precincts 3 and 4 were originally at the Wildwood School, and then with the situation with the Wildwood having to be shut down, that Precincts 3 and 4 were relocated to the Boutwell School and the Town Hall during the 2003 state elections. We had noticeably more difficulties in terms of parking issues, certainly here at the Town Hall, as well as at the Boutwell. Just more challenges in terms of traffic flow, and even greater lines in each of these places. So, it became apparent that we need to have a separate location for Precincts 3 and 4. There have been a number of discussions over the last several months with Beth Lawrence and Glenn Brand, Paul Vergiero, George Hooper, and myself and others about looking at different places. At the time, when this was brought up previously, Board Member Kyra had suggested looking at the current Senior Center in the July 4th building. Those locations were looked at. In fact, the Town Clerk had a representative from the Secretary of the Commonwealth come out and evaluate the locations. The July 4th building would require some modifications because of issues associated with access to the building. The Senior Center, really the biggest impediment there, I think, is just lack of parking. So, basically, after reviewing those locations, and then the high school, we believe that the best location for this intermediate period is for the high school gymnasium to be the location in 2024. This is, of course, an election year. We have the presidential primary coming up in March, the state primary in September. The date has not yet been announced, but typically, it's the second Tuesday of September, and then, of course, the presidential election in November. Turnout's expected to be very high, and it's our belief that the high school would be an appropriate location for that. So, just wanted to bring this to the board's attention. At this meeting, the plan would be to ask Beth Lawrence to come in and speak to it more specifically at your meeting on October 10th, and seek a vote from the board to pursue that. There are requirements in terms of notifying folks that live in Precincts 3 and 4. We certainly want to get that going as soon as possible, and continue that as we approach those elections.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Next is a, an email from me to the department heads, as instructed by the board at your last meeting, just noting that the board was seeking interested candidates, department heads who might be looking to serve as the temporary town manager. We have, in response to that email, an email from Fire Chief William Kavanaugh, expressing interest in serving in that role, an email from John O'Neil, the IT Director, indicating he is not interested in serving in that role at this time, given other responsibilities, an email from George Hooper, our Public Buildings Superintendent, expressing interest in serving in the temporary town manager role, also an email from Police Chief Joe Desmond, expressing interest in serving in that role, and as you know, from prior communication, a letter from Susan Inman, the Assistant Town Manager and HR Director, seeking interest in serving in that role. Next, under Communications, we have a letter from Daniel Ballou Jr. He stopped into my office a couple of weeks ago with this letter. He's seeking that the board sponsor an article at the upcoming annual town meeting to rename the Woburn Street School the Richardson Elementary School. He notes in his communication here that the Richardson family lived in town for many years, indicates that owned significant amount of property in that area, and apparently gifted a good portion of the property, or some property, to the town, and believes it's a tribute to them. So, that is brought to the board's attention. Certainly, the board can take that up at a future meeting, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. We have a letter that was sent out on behalf of the board to Jay Doherty, who is the Chief Executive Officer at Cabot Cabot and Forbes, with regard to the property at 333 Andover Street. He had communicated with the board, seeking to explore the prospect of acquiring the property and working with the town to perhaps address some of its needs. The board, as you recall, had several discussions, most recently at the prior meeting's executive session, and this letter basically conveys that we appreciate his interest, but believe that the town's interests are best served if the town controls the property. Next is a, an email from Robert Peterson Jr., Chair of the Town Manager Screening Committee, and he provides a request for proposal document for hiring consulting services for the recruitment process of a town manager. This, I believe, came in Thursday or Friday, so it was not able to be posted as a board to consider, but he is asking for the board to have this reviewed by counsel, and to provide the ability to go forward with this request for proposal.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I could just, just want to make one correction. It says it was received on Wednesday, September 20th. Just for the record.
Mr. Hall, has KP Law responded to this?
I did talk with, with Mark Rich, and he indicates the, he's looked at the document itself. He, the contract portion, he has a template contract that we typically use on all of our vendor contracts, and he's suggesting that we use that. Otherwise, I think there's a couple of suggestions he had in terms of the criteria, one being that the, as part of the evaluation criteria, the town consider including criteria as to the number of successful, successful candidates that the consulting firm has placed in a community, that that might be also something to consider. The RFP process is a separate process from a straight bid. Typically, when you're buying commodities, it's a straight bid, you know, the lowest price, as long as they're qualified, it gets the project. With a request for proposal, there's two elements to it. One is a price proposal where the firm submits the price for their work, and the second piece of it is a qualifications piece where they respond to particular criteria that are issued as part of the document. And in this circumstance, if the town chooses to go this route, you would need to have a, an evaluation committee that would review the non-price proposals, and then make a recommendation. Mark and I talked about this, and it would seem to me, and certainly, this is the board's call as to how you want to proceed, but for purposes, if the board chooses to go in this direction, that the, this evaluation committee could be, that role could be fulfilled by the screening committee, since you already have a committee in place. They could receive the proposals, the proposals could be directed to the board, and then turned over to the screening committee to evaluate them. They could then meet an executive session with each of the firms that respond. I would imagine you'll get probably two or three firms that would respond to this, and they could then, in turn, review them. They would have to rate each of the firms based upon the criteria established. And then, they would make a recommendation. Typically, in a process like this, the town manager, as the Chief Procurement Officer, receives a response from the evaluation committee. The town manager then opens the price proposal, compares the price proposal against the recommended firm, and makes, you know, a judgment as to whether to go with the lowest-priced firm, or perhaps they could, the town manager could go with a higher price if the criteria of that, the evaluation criteria are decidedly more advantageous to the town. So, what I would suggest is, after the screening committee does their piece, that whoever is in the role of temporary town manager at that point would meet with the board in executive session to review the recommendation of the screening committee, serving as the evaluators, provide the information about the price, and then have a conversation with the board as to how to make an award, or which firm would be the most appropriate to use. So, this is not, unfortunately, this is not on your agenda as a board to consider this evening. I believe that by the time it was received, the agenda had already been posted, and we didn't have the 48 hours to actually post it as a board to consider. But, you know, the board could either take this up at your meeting on the 10th of October, or that would be the earliest at this point.
I feel that with the urgency of all this, we may have to call a special meeting to address this and a few other issues.
Next, under Communications, is a letter from Mark Rich, Town Council. This is responding or going to North Atlantic Fuels. They were the firm that delivered the oil that resulted in the breach of the tank. And Mr. Attorney Rich notes that the, describes the events that took place on January 22nd, 2022, explains the consequences of those events in terms of how the town had to react and the costs it incurred, and notifies Atlantic that this is demand notice, and that the town is seeking reimbursement for funds that were expended associated with this. So, both Atlantic, who was the distributor, and Sprague, who was the oil company, have been placed on notice. And then, finally, under Communications is a letter from Carrie Morris from Comcast, just advising of some relocation of channels on their channel lineup for cable. Under Board to Consider, so number 6 has already been taken up, which was the redirection of the 1.8 million in ARPA funds. Number 7 was taken up just a moment ago with regard to the special counsel. Number 8 is a board to consider establishing a process and next steps to appoint a temporary town manager. As was noted, you have four candidates, or four department heads that expressed interest in serving in that role. So, I think it would be advisable for the board to consider how you want to proceed in terms of that process. you want to proceed in terms of that process.
Chairman, I, I would move that we take no action on eight and move to number nine. That should be the process taken.
I'll second that.
Number nine is board to consider appointing, appointment of a temporary town manager. Oh, sorry, jumped the gun.
It's been, all those in favor?
Number nine is board to consider appointment of a temporary town manager, continuing upon negotiations.
Mr. Chair, I would like to place the name of our building superintendent, George Hooper, for the position of temporary town manager.
Second.
Is that a second for discussion?
A second with the discussion.
That's up to the chair, yeah.
What's the process on doing this? Because now you've got four candidates, are we just gonna, are we gonna run through them one at a time, or how are we gonna, because if one person gets a majority, is the discussion over?
Discussion would be over.
Because, again, nothing against any of the other candidates, but like I said in the past, my, I have strong feelings that we should be appointing the Assistant Town Manager. Again, go through negotiations. If we don't get negotiations for whatever reason, the negotiations aren't successful. The other thing we should discuss is, is that what are the negotiations? Is it strictly salary or are there other considerations? Because in each of the candidates, you're looking at salary, is there any additional benefits or anything? And also, we've got to figure out how do we now backfill that position?
Hold it back. I'm sorry. Backfilling the position is going to be an issue because each individual that has applied has an assistant, and that assistant can just move and fill in on a temporary basis.
And to my point, we have an, we have a town manager, and the town manager is retiring as of the end of October. To your point is that exactly, I think the town manager, the Assistant Town Manager should temporarily slide into that place until such time that our screening committee and comes up with a series of candidates, and then ultimately this board picks a final candidate.
Mr. Chair, if I may, what we had discussed last time in why it's on here as a board to consider was that we had asked that the town manager put it out to the, to the department heads to see who was interested, and then we would come out and from those, whoever responded, we would select somebody. That's the way I understood it, and that's the way I'm reading it. So it wasn't about getting those names and then having, you know, separate conversations and moving it on. It was about getting them, however many or whatever, and then putting it out to a vote. That's the way I understood it, and that's the way it seems to be, right? It wasn't just to keep pushing it down the road.
Correct. We, we had suggested the date of September 20th, I believe it was, for anyone who is interested.
Right.
That is employed, currently employed by the town in a management position, that they could file for, for the position. That has been done. We received, we have four names now. One was already in place, and then there were three others that made it known that they'd be interested in the position. I feel that we should make the nomination today, tonight, and vote on it, stipulating on, basically, contract negotiations that would take place in the very, very near future. I would be hoping for maybe something this week, and if we call for a meeting next week, we can have it all resolved.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, I put the name of George Hooper because I believe he's the best person for the position. He's a gentleman that, that knows all the three major projects that this town is going through right now. He's the longest-serving department head, he understands budgets. He is retiring, or potentially retiring in January, so his replacement, who's already been appointed by Mr. Hall, can take that immediately upon November 1st. He's a Wilmington guy through and through, bond raised and went to the public schools here. Couldn't be a better person to take this position in a temporary manner than George Hooper.
Mr. Chair.
And that, that, by the way, and I don't mean that discouraging to the other candidates, you know, that they all come with great qualifications as well. I know that you had Chief Kavanaugh and Chief Desmond. They play, they're, they're in very, very important positions in public safety, and I would hate to take them away from those positions. You know, we have a, a perfect gentleman right now who's, would take the, take the role of acting or temporary town manager. So this is not to say anything negatively to anybody. I know that the Assistant Town Manager has expressed interest in going for the permanent position at town manager, and I am one who believes that if you're going for the permanent position, then you're not, at least I, I would not look favorable to voting in an acting position because I think it would stifle the process. So I think we got the, the right guy in George Hooper.
Mr. Chairman, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Kira's comments. I just want to emphasize that, you know, first of all, I thank all four applicants. I think they're excellent, all four of them. I appreciate them stepping forward, their willingness to serve. But I think George is uniquely positioned in that he is retiring from the town, and as Mr. Kira mentioned, his replacement has already been named, and that seems like a very seamless transition for us in addition to the things that were mentioned. And it's worth noting again that he's on top, he's the Chair of both of the major building projects that we have going on, so I believe George is the right choice at this time.
Thank you. Any other?
I, yeah, I want to thank all four people for, for stepping forward. I think we, it put us in a very good position because we're all good candidates. I too support George Hooper in this role for the same exact reasons that my colleagues pointed out. The backfill is already in place. He's been involved and is involved in the major projects going on. He does have the budget experience. The budget, I mean, it's all important, but that budget is, you know, it, it's the ultimate thing that we need this person to really, you know, take care of during this time. I mean, there's, everything's important, obviously, but I have a little angst with that, and I think we need somebody who, you know, has done it and has the experience, and, you know, he, he has the tenure, so I support the vote that is, that's on the table.
Chairman, again, I'm, you know, like I said, you know, I'm gonna vote no on George Hooper, nothing against George as a, as a person or a capable department head and probably can be, and, and it sounds like, the way this vote's going, it sounds like a, you know, hopefully a capable temporary town manager. Again, you know, like I said, is I, I don't have any, any issue with either Mr. Hooper or the two police chiefs. I think they're all great people, they're great in their jobs. It's just, like I said, is that I just feel strongly that we have, you know, like in George's case, if he, if he gets appointed to be the temporary town manager, his assistant will fill in as that job, and I just feel that the town manager should, role should be the same. Thank you.
I've tossed and turned over this. The hardest thing to do is to see good, qualified people and friends being in competition with each other. I've weighed it all out, and what concerns me is, one, not that I don't support the deputy chiefs of the fire and police, but it is concerning that a fire chief or a police chief would be working in the role of temporary town manager if a crisis came along. Where would he or she have to move to? It's, it has been a very difficult road for this board. As everyone knows, we have had disagreements over this, but in the end, we have to make a decision, and I feel tonight is the night that we should get the decision out of the way. What I'm happy about is if Mr. Hooper is the selection this evening, he's retiring, so he won't have to worry about his department, and he's got competent people taking his place. So at this time, I will be supporting George Hooper also. I'll ask for a final, a vote on it, to vote for George Hooper for temporary town manager under the, under the stipulation that a negotiation will take place, and if that negotiation goes well, he will become the temporary town manager. Do I have?
I made the motion.
Oh, second.
It's an all in favor.
All those in favor of George Hooper? All those opposed?
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to volunteer to be on the negotiation team for the contract for Mr. Hooper.
Is there anyone else who wants to volunteer?
I'll do it. I'll volunteer. Unless Mr. Bendel wants to.
No.
Okay.
I want to give everyone a, an option for this.
I don't know what you're looking for as far as the makeup, if you're looking for multiple.
Just me two.
Okay, so Kevin and I, it's fine. I don't mind.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion for me to nominate my two colleagues?
Very well.
I'd like to move that we nominate Mr. Kira, Mrs. Misselli, as our subcommittee to negotiate with Mr. Hooper.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We will, George, we will be notifying you in ver- very soon this week to get you in so that you can sit down and have a, a session with Kevin and, look, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm humbled by your support. I know it's a tough time for our community right now, but I'm sure we'll be able to get through this as we are going to build these beautiful buildings, so thank you again for your support.
Thank you, George.
Thank you for volunteering. You know it's no, no.
Volunteer.
Next, under Board to Consider, number 10 is scheduling additional select board meetings to assist the Town Manager Screening Committee with permanent town manager recruitment.
I am, after seeing everything, we have to get this moving. I would like to see us have another meeting Monday, speci- next Monday, specific on the town manager role. And we can.
I'm sorry, did you say next Monday?
Have the vigil.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah.
Have the vigil that night.
Vigil. Oh, that's Monday.
Monday night is the vigil. We got, we got it this week.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, is there a reason that you want to do this, to have meetings to direct the screening committee as to what to do? I mean, I.
No, but we have the.
The chairman said, do you, do you want us to have meetings with, with you on this regard, Mr.? Through the chair, too. Mr. Peters.
Go ahead, Mr. Peters. Mr. Chair, I'm not sure what the extent or, or substance of those meetings would be, but I would implore this board. I had originally sent the RFP over to Mr. Chairman and Mr. Hall, and I know Mr. Hall was not in the office, so I ensured it did receive, again, received by Mr. De Palma last Wednesday at about 2:50 PM. And I know that the agenda for this meeting was posted on Thursday at 4:20 PM. I was, it was my hope that the RFP as presented and as detailed in my email, I did some considerable legwork, I pulled out the RFPs used in three other communities, two of those which were in 2022. That was Sudbury and Westford, and the other one I also looked at was from Berlin. All three of those are from KP Law. I would be absolutely shocked if there was any sort of substantive edits other than, as delineated by Mr. Hall, in what the, that RF, the RFP is going to be edited and tweaked, and my board did go through the RFP ad nauseam and kind of agreed that everything that was in specifically the Westford one, and we pulled out some stuff from that Sudbury RFP, was stuff that we would like to see from our consultant. So again, it would be the request of my board that KP undertake that review, substantive review, and, and make any edits or additions that need to be made. It be sent out for all of you for review and then brought up to consider at a meeting at the earliest possible time, because what we're faced with here is, I know we have a pending temporary town manager who's going to be, some of the negotiations, gonna be stepping in, but that doesn't relieve us, us of the duty to get a.
Yep.
Permanent town manager in there, so it would kind of be, and this was a discussion that we had at our board, too. Something like this, waiting for our next regularly scheduled meeting, that's, that's a long delay, that if we can avoid it at any cost, it would be, I think that would be the best course of action.
Mr. Chair, could I just throw, throw you to Mr. Petersen? Mr. Petersen, would it make sense that once KP reviews what you, what your committee has done and what they suggest and pull it all together, that it go to you for one last look-through before it comes to us for approval? In case they missed something?
I, I, I don't, I don't think so. I just, I really don't think we're gonna get very many changes. I mean, it was the, if you read Berlin, Westford, Sudbury, they're almost ver- it's almost verbatim through and through, and this specific consultant for this specific matter, it, it's pretty well-laid out, and I do like what, one of the additions Mr. Hall brought up, talking about how many people have you placed, because if you go through and you look at what consultants are used throughout the Commonwealth, there's really three of them, and you're gonna get a taste of, well, I mean, you can also see it by a quick, a quick search of the Google machine, but it'll allow us to know how many people these consultants have placed. So I, I don't think that a subsequent review of my committee would be necessary, because at the end of the day, we're not the ones who can issue the RFP.
Right, we have to, and I was just speaking to Mr. Hall, and would it satisfy everyone that if we had a joint meeting to resolve any issues that we have or you have, or, and we can get it so you're on your way, unless you're presenting someone to us, it'll be on your hands.
What would the, what would the, what would the joint committee at this?
Well, we have to, we have to do the RFP.
Yes.
We can also maybe firm up some of the dates in question. We can work together on the dates with the RFP, get those all resolved, and then just move on. We said, I'm looking at it that if we can clear it all up in one quick meeting, a quick meeting, one meeting, then that's it. Now you can move, move forward and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. The dates, as stated in my email, the dates we used were the consensus of, I mean, if you folks wanted to change those dates, I mean, that's completely within your purview as well. We just used the, the same timeline as was used in those other municipalities to, I mean, if it was deemed enough, I mean, I think the consensus of our committee was, if that was a timeline that worked in those other two committees, it would be a timeline that would work in ours. And our driving goal at our last meeting was getting this RFP out as soon as it can get out.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. I can certainly check with Mark Rich tomorrow to see if there were any other substantive issues that he had. I think the two items that, well, the two items that he brought up, one being the contract template that he provided to me, and then the reference to including as a criteria, the number of candidates that were successfully placed in a community by each of these firms. One of the things that the board should consider, again, because you're, if the intent is to go through a request for proposal process, is determining who will serve on that evaluation committee. Typically, as I indicated, as a chief procurement officer, if I'm issuing an RFP, I'll establish a evaluation committee. Oftentimes, it's department heads or others that are related to the matter at hand. They'll review the proposals, the qualitative end of it, so to speak, and interview the firms or candidates and then make a recommendation. And then I unseal the price proposal, take a look at the price proposal versus the comparative proposal, and then make a decision is if it turns out, for example, that the firm that, that is recommended is not the lowest price, then I have to make a judgment, you know, is that, is the qualitative difference so much greater that it's worth going with someone other than the lowest price? So that's, that's a decision that make, it should be made. In this case, obviously, it's a different circumstance, so as I suggested, it seems that the screening committee is well suited to serve as the evaluating committee. They could, through calling a meeting, an executive session, interview the firms if they're so inclined and ultimately submit a recommendation back to the temporary town manager, Mr. Hooper. And then I, I suggested that an executive session be held with the temporary town manager and the board at that time to review the price proposal, the qualitative piece coming back from the screening committee, and then a decision could be made. So there is a few steps that are going to be required here, but I, I think that would be the appropriate process. But I think the board would need to determine who is going to serve in that evaluative committee role.
So right now, the most pertinent thing that we, we should be concerned with is the RFP, correct?
Yes, and I, I would expect that by tomorrow, I can confirm whether it's good to go with those two changes.
And before we authorize this, we have to pass it in a vote, correct?
The
The RFP.
RFP, well, I mean, is it, the, the board can certainly vote on it. Again, typically, this is, you know, request for proposal and the purchase of goods and services are under the direction of the town manager. But if the board is so inclined, you can certainly take a vote on it.
If this is something that we can just pass along to the
My, my suggestion, I guess, just to recognizing that time is of the essence, if the board is comfortable with this, is that I have a conversation with Mark Rich. If there are any items beyond the two, I can't imagine, quite frankly, that there's anything substantive that's going to change from the RFP. And then, and then if, if, if that's it, then we could get it out the door, so to speak. And then that way, we're, you're not waiting until another meeting to discuss the request for proposal.
Mr. Chair, I just, I think that's the, the way to go. I don't think we need the board's input. If Mr. Peterson is good with, with it, Mr. Hall, Mark, Mr. Rich, I'm fine. And I say, you know, i- if it's not needed for our vote, I say we skip that and just, you know, let them go ahead and move forward so it doesn't hold up the
I was under the assumption that it had a, we had a vote on it. But if we don't have to vote on it.
Yeah, there's no.
I have no qualms with
Yeah, but
A review by Mark Rich and yourself and sending it out. Again, like I said, I was under the impression we had a vote, but
Great.
The, the only thing I would suggest is, so the RFP is obviously going to have to be, the, the dates will shift depending on when it gets published. We went off published dates with other towns and municipalities.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it's an RFP, and I'm sure Town Council could explain the legal around that anyways. You, you, and Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong here as well, those, the dates for something such as interviews, those can shift without any sort of contractual implications relative to interviews and stuff like that and contract awards as the dates as issued in RFP and dates actually issued.
Yeah, the, the key dates will certainly be the date that the price and non-price proposals are submitted. That's really going to be key. And typically, I think at the least, it would be advisable to provide 15 days notice. I mean, three weeks is probably more standard. But for, between the time this is posted and the time proposals and non, and price proposals and non-price proposals are due. You know, once that date is established, then the proposals come in, they're distributed to the, if it turns out that the board wishes to have the screening committee serve as the evaluators, proposals are distributed to the evalu-, the screening committee. And then you would want to meet as a committee and then go through the proposals and then set up dates to interview the firms.
Mr. Chair, I would like to take no action on board to consider on number 10.
Second. All those in favor?
So is, okay, just to be clear then, is there, who, who is going to serve as the, as evaluating the, the group that's evaluating these proposals?
Wouldn't the chair, I don't mean to volunteer that, but would the chair do that or? I mean, I
The chair was evaluating the RFPs when they come in?
Right, when, so again, the, the proposals, when the RFP is issued, there's two elements that come in. One is a sealed envelope with the price for the services to be rendered. The second sealed envelope is a qualitative summary of what they can do, what their track record is. All, all the things, you know, kind of their sales pitch as to why they're the firm that should be hired. So this, the price proposal remains sealed until after the qualitative non-price proposal has been reviewed by somebody, whether it's whoever it is. And then that group comes back and, for sake of the example, if there's three proponents, they'll come back and say, you know, we've reviewed the qualitative things that they bring to the table. We've interviewed them and we believe that firm number three is the firm that should be hired.
I, I would suggest the screening committee take on that responsibility.
I agree, yeah. It's their RFP, right.
Totally.
That's what you're there for, I think.
Yeah.
They're going to be the ones that are going to do all the work.
Tag your Yeah, if you don't need someone on this board, I agree. It should be on them. They get to work with the people.
Yeah, that was my suggestion, that the board establish this group as that committee.
I just assumed that they would.
Do you want a motion? I, I make a motion that we have the screening committee review and make recommendations on the RFPs for the hiring of, of a
Permit to tell me, don't you?
No, no.
No.
Hiring of a consultant for the permanent manager.
Consultant. I'll second that.
Favor? On you.
Uh, next under board to consider, request of Gigi Sanlucian to light the town common pink for the month of October for breast cancer awareness.
So moved.
Second. Favor?
Uh, next is a board to consider, the request of Deanna DeGregorio, Wilmington Community Fund, to use the municipal parking lot on Middlesex Avenue on Saturday, November 4, 2023, from 9:00 AM to noon. You'll recall that a request was made previously for the date in September for the paper shredding event. That was the same date as Hurricane Lee was supposed to hit. They canceled in anticipation of the storm. They're now seeking to have the date on Saturday, November 4. We also have on that same date, the Sons of Italy is having a blood drive. I think it's possible to have both, as I understand it, the blood drive is typically set up on the July 4 building side of the parking lot. And working with Jamie McGoldy and perhaps the police chief, we can make sure that the, if this was to pass, that the shredding operation is set up so that they're not impacting the folks for the blood drive.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Maybe the people who go to the shredders will see the signs for the blood drive and are so inclined.
Yeah.
Uh, next under board to consider is a request of Gwyn Lawson, Shawshank Tech School Committee, to place signs of graduating Wilmington seniors, of which there would be 70, Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational Technical School on the town common from May 28 through June 11, 2024. As you recall in the past, this has been allowed typically a couple of signs on the Church Street side and a couple of signs on the Middlesex Ave side.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? So moved.
Uh, next is a board to consider, the request of Beth Rooney, Secretary of the Wilmington High School Touchdown Club, to conduct a fundraising car wash at the Public Buildings Department on Sunday, September 15, 2024, from 9:00 AM to noon, rain date, Sunday, September 22, 2024. I would just note, one of the things that we're going to have to work on going forward is checking in with the Masonic Hall, because I, my only concern would be that there aren't conflicts where they have events going on and it may constrain the ability to use the the, the public buildings lot. But assuming that's not the case here, wouldn't seem to be a problem.
Do I have a motion?
Beverly, Beverly, yes.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So it went to a date that there wouldn't be any, it shouldn't be that.
All right. Oh, okay, uh, date is September 11. No, was, was approved for September 11. September 15th, but
Because it, it avoids me, that September 11, they approved a, um, a car wash for organization. September 15 was one of them. I think it was organized, right? So I contacted Beth and she said she'd change it. And I think I because it was after
Right. Uh, let's see, we've got
Well, we're, we're a year away, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it.
Can we just table it until next meeting?
Yeah, let's just
Can we find out? Make sure it's on the next board meeting's ag- agenda.
Uh, then the last one is, board consider executing drainage easement agreements for property located at 319 A Annover Street and 203 Lowell Street. Apparently, there's been a drainage setup there for some period of time, although it was discovered that the town never formally obtained a, an easement. Paula Looney had discussions with each of the property owners. These drainage areas are part of the town's infrastructure and both property owners agreed to convey an easement in each case for a dollar. So it would be recommended that the board authorize this.
I have a motion. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Now, public comments.
Good evening. Kevin McDowell, 140 Annover Street. I came to talk about a few things tonight, but prior to talking about those, I just wanted to just give my opinion on what I believe should be checks and balances in the town. And as I was listening to Mr. Peterson explain that he was reviewing three towns that KP Law suggested that the same consultant worked on. And then you passed on the responsibility to the screening committee to review any evaluations. I would have liked to seen not only the screening committee review it, but also the board of selectmen to review that. But what I came here tonight to discuss is something, something in the past that I have brought up to the board, but there's been no action taken. And it's relative to the MBTA. And I have a train schedule that I brought before the board before. And I'll just show it to you. I don't know if the people at home can see it. But the town of Wilmington pays hundreds of thousands of dollars to the MBTA to have two train stops. And I've talked to people in town where they actually cannot take the train because the train didn't stop at all the stop times. And as you know, there's a beautiful lady who was killed at the North Wilmington train station. And if you look at this line item right here where it says North Wilmington, okay, as you follow it across, you see some blank times where the train crossed but didn't stop.
When was this?
This is a while ago, Mr. De Palma. I'm just simply showing this to you to see if you would take action at a future meeting to actually have an agenda item to address this. Not only at this station, but actually at the Wilmington Center Station, to make sure that the people of Wilmington have the train stopping at every single crossing time. So the people in town who are paying and contributing to the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the town pays the MBTA can have the right to get onto that train. Now
Now, hold on one second, one second, please. What we will do is we will, we will direct all this to our representative, to the MBTA.
Why?
Because he is
You're the town representative of the selectmen, okay?
Yes, I am, but we have, we have, we have a selectman who goes to the meetings. And he can address these with the MBTA.
The board would have to take a vote. The board would have to take a vote to direct him to tell the MBTA that it's the desire of the town to have the train stop at every single stop. And I want to point out something that's very, very important. If the train had have been stopping at every single stop in North Wilmington, it wouldn't have plowed through a lady and killed her when the lights weren't working. And so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you
No, 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 no. No, no, hold off, hold off.
This is, this is a leadership issue.
Hold on for a minute, please. Please, I'm asking nicely. This is why we have a representative that represents the town of Wilmington with the town manager that goes and goes to all the meetings with the MBTA. He will, he will bring these all up, but these are, these are, when were these set?
You are, you are deflecting responsibility right now.
No, I'm not, sir.
Absolutely, 100%.
No, I'm not.
This requires an agenda item. This requires action of the board, and this actually is reasonable. It's reasonable.
No, it does not, sir. It does not.
It isn't an unreasonable request.
We have a representative that, that goes
I understand that. You said that three times.
Yeah, and I'm going to say it again, sir. That's why we will direct him to discuss this with, with the MBTA.
Who, who's the representative? What have you done so far to address this issue?
I didn't realize that there was an issue and no one has mentioned it.
There you go. There you go. There you go. Nothing against you, Mr. West, but who's been the representative in the past before Mr. West became a selectman?
What difference does it make?
It makes a big difference because nothing's been done.
Don't start.
Nothing's been done. Hello? Why are you deflecting responsibility?
What did you say? I am not deflecting.
You are absolutely deflecting responsibility.
I'm not gonna put up with it anymore, sir.
You don't have to put up with it. Have an agenda meeting, the next meeting or this meeting after that. Why is that such a big deal?
Cause we don't need it because we have a representative that's-
He doesn't even know, he's not aware of it. Did you just listen to what he said?
I've never seen this before neither. This is something you've laid up.
Well, you know what? Maybe you should have when you heard that a lady was killed.
Oh, pal, that's it, no more. I'm not gonna take attacks to this, to this board.
What? This isn't an attack. This is a, a simple request for you to exhibit leadership, display some ability to represent the town in a responsible manner.
We do. We do. We fight on that board all the time. If Mr. West has an issue, he brings it up and he fights until it gets resolved.
Mr. West does not take the vote of all the board.
We don't need the vote.
Mr. Chairman, if, may I?
Don't need the vote of all the board.
Mr. Chair, I, I would just advise that you listen to what, uh, Mr. McDonald has to say. There's no need to respond. Public comment is an opportunity for people to offer comment. The board, really, it's best served to just, uh, take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the second thing that I wanted to mention was- Relative to the funds that were directed to the senior center. And the reason why I wanted to speak about that is because at the town meeting, I passed out flyers showing the cost of the, um, detox center, which had to comply with medical building codes and very high standards there. It is a building that has more square footage than the senior center and it came in like four million dollars less. In addition to that, I demonstrated, uh, a house where we could have built ten houses, forty bedrooms, uh, twenty garages, hardwood floors, granite countertops, kit, uh, ten kitchens. And now we're hearing that the s- the senior center is over budgeted and that you have to direct that money to the senior center. And I'm, I wanna point out why I'm a little bit concerned about it. Because I built a house on Ruben Street and so I know a little bit about the water line there. As a matter of fact, when I had to actually tap into the water line, it was actually off the road, on the other side of the road, on the other side of a lady's fence. In addition to that, there was ledge in the area. So you're expecting to do a water line, okay? And you're taking money from that and putting it into a senior center, which I believe is way over budgeted. And I think, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but did you have a layout of all the filed sub bids and all the itemized list of what the senior center, um, cost at the meeting tonight, Mr. DePalma?
Yes, we did.
You did? And what is so extraordinary that is causing this senior center to be over budgeted? Inflation.
That's right.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think, again, I think you, you, there's no need to respond.
Well, I, you don't, you don't need to respond, but I think you need to understand that I go to the town meetings and I listen to Mr. Woods, um, give a presentation of when we have broken water mains that oftentimes he encounters contamination in the ground. Uh, as I know, there are ledge issues out on Ruben Street. You're increasing the size of the main. You possibly have to relocate utilities. In addition to that, when a, when a water main that I know for sure is off the road, what are you gonna do when that cost goes way up, Mr. DePalma? I don't think that you, you addressed any of that tonight and I was a little bit disappointed in that. So, um, I understand that you don't wanna, don't wanna take the initiative to make any decisions to represent the people of the town by asking these difficult questions. You just wanna deflect it. So, Mr. West, I'm hoping that you can do something about this and I'm hoping that you recognize that the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the Wilmington people pay to the MBTA, they deserve to have every single stop, um, serviced with that train crosses at, or not only Wilmington Center, but North Wilmington. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna remind, remind the board and the public that Senator Feingold is gonna be at the senior center tomorrow at, uh, six o'clock. So if anybody wants to attend, and certainly the public, be a good opportunity to ask questions or see, hear what he, hear what he has to say from the state level.
Thank you. Any other announcements? New business?
Just have, maybe, Mr. Chairman, just have one item. We're starting to get requests a year out for use of town property, you know, like for car washes and things like that. And I'm wondering, do we really need, should we be setting a limit to how far out we go? Because the thing is, is that, you know, somebody said, might say, well, gee, you know, I'm gonna grab a few times now and then another, uh, you know, and they're all worthy organizations. But another worthy organization might wanna see if they could, you know, if, well, it's a year, so I won't worry about it. And then we find out we're, we're pretty much scheduled out.
I believe one of, one of the issues with that, where people are scheduling so far out is they know we're gonna have the construction of the new town hall school administration building. And I believe the word has gotten out that we're not gonna be, uh, allowing car washes in the students' parking lot until, uh, the parking lot is done, the construction's done, for concern of safety. So I believe what a lot of people are doing is they're just trying to get in ahead of time, uh, jumpstart on what, uh, what they're gonna need. We can, but I don't, I don't see an issue where as long as everyone knows that we will accept, uh, requests for next year. But I don't know how we could, you know, uh, have a cutoff date, so to speak.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just one, one of the things to consider, you'll recall, um, several years ago now, we seem to have, uh, a, a growing number at the time of, uh, groups looking to have road races. And so, um, there was a practice, uh, put in place where, and Beverly, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe they, uh, groups that were looking to have road races, cause in that case, it was a budget issue. We had to plan for, um, police details and so on. There was a requirement that, um, groups looking to, um, schedule road races in the subsequent fiscal year had to submit their requests by October first. Um, one thing to consider is whether you establish a similar requirement, um, you know, whatever that date might be, that, uh, whether it's, you know, um, October first, November first, whatever that date might be for the subsequent calendar year. Um, uh, you know, again, I suppose the downside of that obviously is if, uh, a particular group misses the cutoff, then they're out a year, but-
I think that is something we should take into consideration.
Chairman, I would just counter with the fact that I think a lot of these requests are from school organizations, obviously teams, clubs, that are acting upon the school calendar and they're kind of predicting that they're gonna need that mon- that funds, uh, for that particular group. So they get out ahead of it early so that they know, you know, they're gonna hopefully meet their target amount of money raised. So I think that's, that's why we see, you know, at the, this time of year, beginning of the school year, we're seeing a club or a team-
Right.
You know, hoping to secure a date so that they can depend on that, those funds.
And, Mr. Chair, and I'd just like to li- add on that too. And I think, I was, uh, thinking the same thing with the schools starting and they know they gotta get those car washes in, you know, September, beginning of October before it gets too cold, so.
For another meeting? At next meeting? Okay, what have we got, new business? Important dates?
Uh, important dates, uh, Sunday through October first, farmer's market, town common parking lot, ten AM to one PM. September twenty-fifth, Wilmington Incorporated, two hundred and ninety-three years ago. September twenty-sixth, uh, Senator Barry Feingold, town hall meeting. Uh, B- uh, Bazzell Senior Center, six PM to seven PM. September thirtieth is the Fall Fest, town common, ten AM to four PM. October second is the Candlelight Vigil, town common, six thirty, PM to eight PM. October fourth is the brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Also on October fourth is a, a town school administration building committee meeting, town hall, room nine, six PM. Uh, October fifth, RMLD Open House, two eighteen Ash Street, Reading, three PM to six PM. October seventh, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. Uh, October ninth is Columbus Day, town offices are closed. October tenth is the next, uh, select board meeting, town hall, room nine, seven PM. October eleven, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Again, on October fourteenth, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. And then on October eighteenth, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. October twentieth is the Carter Lecture Fund Middle School Auditorium Presentation of Mike Slater Tribute to Elvis, seven PM. October twenty-first, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. October twenty-third is a select board meeting, uh, town hall, room nine, seven PM. October twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, curbside collection of yard waste. October twenty-fifth, drop, uh, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. October twenty-eighth, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. And then November first, uh, town school admin building committee, town hall, room nine, six PM.
Thank you, Mr. Hell. Now I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, on behalf of the board, it's my pleasure to, uh, salute Mr. Stephen Gary McDougall. Gary joined the United States Army fifty-three years ago this week, uh, served as an E-four specialist. He was assigned to the Sixth Maintenance Battalion in the United States Army in Europe. He, uh, worked on a wheeled vehicle mechanic, as a wheeled ma- vehicle mechanic. He earned the National Service Medal and Expert M fourteen Rifle Medal. Gary's a longtime Wilmington resident who's active volunteer for many organizations, including local heroes, where he, uh, helped pack many, many boxes over the years. And he also faithfully picks up worn flags that are left at the veterans' office for proper disposal. And if you are at any of the town's veteran ceremonies, you'll see, uh, Gary there volunteering. So, Mr. McDougall, we thank you for your service and we salute you.
Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Have a good evening, everyone.